Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, and I welcome you all to the Town Council's meeting tonight. I would ask that everybody, um, stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible)
Dale, if I could ask you to do the rule, please. Council President Healy?
Here.
Council Vice President Collins?
Here.
Councilman De Cruz?
Here.
Councilwoman Gladhill?
Here.
Councilman Veale?
Here.
All members present.
Moving on to, uh, item four, uh, I'd like to see the approval of the minutes from the previous meetings, both A and B, the work session and the regular session.
Motion to approve the minutes of, uh, previous meetings, both A and B.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing no oppositions, we'll move on to number six, which is licenses.
(inaudible). Oh. Consent agenda. Let's see, we make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to number six, A, a resolution granting a Victorated license to NNS Massage Cafe LLC, DBA Massage Cafe, ninety-nine Fortin Road in Kingston, Rhode Island. Application by Noor Sawan of Atwell's Avenue, Providence. Is somebody here to represent? Please come up to the podium and state your name.
Hi, my name is Noor Sawan. So, it's a cafe, serve all kinds of coffee, and, uh, we serve to a hookah, the, with the, the non-tobacco hookers and the tobacco hookers, depends about the age, it's eighteen plus, of course. We don't let anyone under eighteen to go in. We have another branch, it's on Atwell's Avenue and, uh, Providence, and, uh, we opened that since two thousand eight, and we're trying to open that new one in, uh, the plaza next to the campus in URI. Um, so, we don't serve any kind of food, it's only like that spin, the Spanish dip, salsa, that, just like, uh, the ships. All the smoothies we have, we have a ca- coffee, cappuccino, lot of the hookah. That's all, like, a small cafe with the hookah, like a Dunkin' Donuts and the hookah, kind of.
What are your hours of operation?
We open at six, close at one. In downtown Providence, we open at six, close at two at weekend, weekday six till one.
Can I ask you a quick question? Uh, what is, uh, it's H-O-O-K-A-H, is that, you said, it's a hookah?
Hookah, yeah, H-O-O.
What is that exactly?
The, the hookah's like a tobacco, like a cigarettes, but it's, uh, like a flavored tobacco. We add the flavored tobacco, I don't know if you see the hookah before, it's some, it's like a-
I've seen one before, but I don't know.
Yeah. It's like a vibe, we add the hose for it, there's a water on the pan, and the top, we add the, we put the flavored tobacco, there are different flavors. Some, uh, we have two, the, uh, the, um, the menu we have in Providence, two main, uh, tobacco we use. One, it's called Al Facher, made in Emirates, in Middle East, the other one, it's called Starbuzz, made in USA. So, the Starbuzz, it's like, more than like, the alcohol flavor, but it's, there is no alcohol, of course, it's a tobacco, but the same names of the alcohol, pina colada, strawberry margarita, all of those flavors. And, uh, one Al Facher is just like a strawberry, double apple, mint, a warmelon, all the same, like, all the fruits, but they make it as a tobacco flavor.
There's, is there smoke or no smoke?
It's a smoke, yeah, it's a smoke.
Mike, what's our, um, do we have like a-
You have to be licensed, do you have your license from the state?
Yeah, we got the cigarettes license, it's the same as cigarette license.
I understand, I'm just, so, you have a license now?
Yes. It's, I already, when I apply for the license, I show her the, uh, license from the state and, uh, um, her retail license and the cigarettes license.
Does she apply, uh, to, uh?
Oh, okay, of course.
And will you be open seven days a week, how many days a week will you be open?
Seven days a week when the, the semester, when the URI opens. But like, we close at summer time in here. I never been in this area before, but in Providence, we open seven days a week.
What kind of air filtration system will you have? Are you in your own building, or are you, um, do you have neighbors?
A, uh, with all the state requirements.
Second.
Right.
So, we would just ask that you present the licenses to-
I don't have it right now with me, but I can, like, I can't ask them to send a big, me a picture right now of that, but, I already give her, she took a picture of the license, I don't know if you have it somewhere. She already took a picture of the license, I bring it here when I apply for the city license.
So, do we entertain the motion as it is in place, or do we need to modify the wording on this, to make sure that-
No, the motion is that it would be issued subject compliance with the state health of, uh, blessings, um, but I think he has his license, um, for his compensation, he needs his license, um-
Okay, and, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions? So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six B, which is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to mattress firm, DBA Mattress Firm, twenty-six South County Commonsway in Wakefield. Application by Robert Jack Inowitz of Hampton Avenue in Saint Louis. Is anybody here to speak on their behalf?
Uh, Rob Jacknewitz, speaking. Uh, good evening, um, the application for holiday licenses, really what we did is change the name of our existing store, which was called Sleepy's, it's now being called Mattress Firm. Everything else remains the same, hours of operation are ten to eight, Monday through Saturday, twelve to six on Sunday, same products, um, the only thing physically to change was the sign, so, same employees, same cash registers, same everything.
Motion to approve item six B.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so-
Thank you.
Moving on to number seven, A, a public hearing relative to the adoption to, uh, of the proposed two thousand seventeen, eighteen to two thousand fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three capital improvement plan, as shown on exhibit one attached here, too. Steve, I'll ask you to speak on that.
The Town Council has conducted three work sessions, the first on January first, uh, fourth, the second on January fifth, as well as one with the school committee on, uh, January eleventh. The capital improvement program for the seventeen, eighteen year has been reformatted to provide additional information. The documents provides about a hundred and sixty pages worth of detail on priority projects for capital improvements. Capital improvements within the document are defined as those facility improvements which have a cost of in excess of ten thousand dollars and a life longer than what the requirement is for debt retirement on project costs. On exhibit one, we provide a summary of the thirty-eight projects that are listed in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen capital budget. The capital budget is the first year funding for the six-year capital improvement program. Uh, we have had long-term discussion on each of these different items, I'm here to answer any questions that the council or public may have on any of the projects listed. As noted, we're presenting the capital budget based on the different funds of where the project would be funded. The general fund has approximately twelve projects, within those twelve projects, there's multiple acquisitions, such as with the park rehabilitation, it includes tennis court resurfacing, uh, lights for the tennis court at a different location, as well as boat ramp improvements and beach, uh, nourishments. Those type of projects are listed within the overall document. On senior services, two program elements are there, one is for, uh, second year funding for a roof replacement, as well as improvements to, uh, with the addition of a deck on the adult day services, uh, building. The water fund and the sewer, uh, sewer fund or wastewater program. Each of those list different, uh, capital facility improvements, none of those are related to property tax. All funds associated with expenditures in those two enterprise funds would be paid for through the enterprise fund or the rate base that, uh, is used to support those operations. The last, uh, fund that's listed here is the school fund. School fund has listed, uh, nine different, uh, programmatic, uh, activities, some of them have got multiple elements within, uh, within the, uh, within their program. What I would say is that when we look at the capital improvement program, it's a long-term planning document, which means that, uh, what we're doing is forecasting what the cost of items will be and the priority for their improvements. What we're also, uh, defining is where the dollars are available to meet those project costs. Those are general, uh, cost identifications. On the capital budget, which is presented here this evening, we're looking at monies that would need to be allocated in next year's budget. So, this is the first stage in the development of the general fund, the senior services fund, and so forth. Uh, any of the items that are listed within the capital budget are subject to revision based on council adjustments on any of the budgets other than the school fund. The council can direct specific reductions or increases on any fund other than the school fund. The school fund's initial proposal, which was sent to the, uh, sent in for a capital budget purpose, was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. When the school committee finishes their budget deliberation for the seventeen, eighteen year, they will be again reviewing that five hundred and eighty thousand dollars and may in fact make revisions, either up or down. The third page of the, uh, exhibit one shows the second half of the capital improvement program, this is one of the costs of projects that are anticipated over the six-year period. As you can see, if all of those projects came in at the cost that are predicted today, as well as, uh, are funded over that six-year period, we spend approximately twenty point four million dollars. There's approximately seventeen project listings that are within that long-term, uh, program. That long-term program also includes, uh, funding sources of about five point four million dollars coming from bonds, about three million dollars, uh, coming from, uh, secured funds in, in capital reserve funds and so forth. All of those are identified within the overall program. The last element that's identified in exhibit one is fair share fees development. We're looking at there being only one fair share fee for the seventeen, eighteen year, that would be for recreational facilities. We're looking at a, uh, cost at the time that a certificate of occupancy is issued for a new residential unit at three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for the seventeen, eighteen year for a single household fee. That's up ten dollars over what the current year cost is. The household with two bedrooms or less will be at seventy-five percent of that cost, or twenty-three, sixty-three, about eight dollars increase. This is the first year that we're recommending a suspension of the education, uh, uh, fair share development fees, uh, for obvious reasons. With the reductions in enrollments, we have far more facilities than we actually have use of or, uh, predicted use of or improvements to be made to, therefore, uh, the continued collection on fair share fees would be inappropriate. So, the only fair share fee will be recreation associated. Be glad to answer any questions council or public has, uh, relative to the, uh, the entire document, and we can define any of the projects that are listed here with greater detail.
As this is a public hearing, I would like to entertain from the floor, anybody who would like to come up and have any comments or questions, come to the podium and please state your name. Yeah, the public hearing, right now, that's the, um, just this public hearing, uh, is the budget.
Hi, I'm Andrew Gomartin. Just a point of clarification on the school fund. Section E four, computer equity replacement, fifty thousand dollars. So, if it costs two hundred thousand dollars a year to provide computers to students and fifty thousand dollars to replace the last two years of broken equipment, that means one in four pieces of equipment is breaking per year, which means the life of those computers, which are supposed to be eight years, is now around four years, if that's what this number means.
One of the things I've spoken with the school, uh, department about is breaking out their computer acquisitions and replacement fund differently than they currently do. Replacements on units such as laptops or computers should be outside of the capital improvement program and should be on a depreciation basis. If in fact the computer is assumed to last six years, then whatever the cost is, there should be a depreciated value going into a reserve fund for each of those six years so that the replacement value would be there. Uh, that's something that the school, uh, program does need to look at. There are two different, actually, there's four or five different programs here. Elementary laptops is a, uh, a program, there are no depreciation dollars set aside on any of the capital improvements that are technology-related with the school fund at this time. The town has set up its own, uh, non-major equipment replacement reserve at, at the direction of the council, uh, certainly, I think that's something the school should be looking at in the future.
Any further comments from employees? Any further discussion at the table?
Motion to close the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to number six.
Motion to approve the capital improvement program as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
I think-
Oh, go ahead. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, communications, uh, eight, the resolution adopted by the Charlestown Town Council on January tenth, two thousand seventeen, requesting support in opposition to the Federal Railroad Administration's proposed change to the railroad alignment within the town of Charleston borders is received and the council further directs.
I would make a motion that we, um, support the initiative by the Charlestown Town Council and the, um, uh, the way that it was presented to us. Um, I mean, I have family live in Charlestown, I'm pretty up on the situation, and I oppose it one hundred percent, um, so, I'm comfortable supporting the amendment as it was sent to us.
I, I agree we should support this, um, in solidarity with Charlestown and other neighboring communities. I think, uh, what we discussed in the work session is important for people to hear in the public. Uh, this plan and this, uh, environmental impact statement is just part of a very long planning process that the Federal Rail Authority is undergoing, so this is looking out until the year twenty forty. Uh, there will be lots of opportunity for public comment as the process moves along. I think overall, I'm very supportive of rail, high-speed rail in the northeast, I mean, it's important for our economic development, uh, not just here locally, but, uh, throughout the region. Um, so, we, it, it's one of those situations where we gotta be looking farther ahead. Um, right now, the way they've released this plan is not something that we can stand for though.
Just, was, second, 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 so, okay, we have a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no oppositions, let's move to a resolution adopted by the Warwick City Council on January sixth, two thousand seventeen, requesting support in its request to the General Assembly to enact legislation to classify multi-unit rental housing developments as non-smoking areas, is received and placed on file and the council further directs.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, table, uh, or put on file, sorry, uh, see, based on the fact that there's not enough information or clarity on the request they made. Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, we'll move on to D. A communication from Stephen Stewart, Chairman of the Sogatucket Veterans Memorial Commission, dated January twelfth, two thousand seventeen, requesting that the council expand the Sogatucket Veterans Memorial Commission's charge to designate the commission as a standing committee and to expand its duties, is received, uh, and placed on file and the council further directs. Hi, Steve.
Good evening.
Well, I was gonna make a motion that we, um, approve this expansion, uh, we talked about it in the work session, we're really excited to see what you guys can do, and, um, it's nice that there's a group of motivated individuals to really take responsibility for these memorials and, um, and look at what we can do to maintain and improve them.
Yeah, I, I'd love to give Steve a chance just to talk about what, what this is, uh, here on the, for folks who are in the audience.
Certainly, uh, my name is Steve Stewart, I am a, uh, a resident of South Kingston. I am also the chairman of the Veterans Sogatucket Memorial Commission. We were chartered to take care of the Sogatucket Park names, at the addition of the names, and when we were doing these, uh, research and, and looking at the memorial, we noticed it needed some repair and, and so forth. And, um, so, we, we kinda like, uh, took, think, oh, it would be a good idea if we would kind of, uh, approach this idea a little bit more expanded, some more. And, uh, because I am the chairman of the parade committee, parade committees, um, every year we lay wreath at the Hazard School Memorial, and it's embarrassing to go there and see the, the, um, destruction of this monument, um, it's, this monument has got, uh, Revolutionary War, Spanish-American War, World War One, and the Civil War. Um, this is part of our, our heritage, this is part of our national pride, national pride. And to look at it, you, you feel like either taking a bulldozer to it or, or putting a thousand million dollars into it to, to get it fixed up. And so, uh, Dale Holbert and I spoke about this in length, uh, at one of our meetings, and we wanted to approach the council to see if we could expand the charter we have to encompass not only the Sogatucket Park Memorial, not only the Hazard, um, School Memorial, but all memorials. Um, Dale Holbert has a list of those, um, and some of them are, as you know, some of them have been overrun, some of them are written in the back of people's houses, they don't even know it 'cause it's covered with trees and stuff. So, we would like to, uh, ask the council's, uh, permission to expand this charter.
Second, please, as per-
All those in favor? Yeah, I think it's great.
Thank you so much.
Aye.
Any questions moving forward? Thank you, Steve. Uh, next item is a communication on dated January eleventh from Alfred and Barbara Crudell and Mary Noons requesting support in the opposition to the Federal Railroad Administration's proposed change to the railroad alignment within the town of Charleston borders, are received and placed on file and council further directs.
Motion to place this on file, I think we've supported this with a resolution earlier.
Second.
Could I suggest that a letter be sent back to the, uh, these individuals and advise them of two things, one, the council's action as far as the NEC is concerned, uh, and secondly, that the town was in fact represented at that meeting.
Yes, we're, I know that we see correspondence, so, we're not really aware, so Dale, if you have any other questions. Uh, we have a motion in the second, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, we come to item number nine, which is comments from interested citizens. This is the time that the citizens in the audience, uh, can come up and speak to the council. Once again, I ask you to come to the podium and state your name, uh, and where you are from, and you, we usually typically limit these comments to five minutes, so, anybody who wishes to come up to speak, now is your time to come forward.
Good evening, I'm Helen Farrell Allen, head of Tempest Fugit, and delighted to be able to report that the support you gave me two weeks ago has blossomed. Um, we hope to have great plans for Wednesday, the twenty-second of February, which of course is General Washington's birthday. Uh, we are going again to have, um, to, to celebrate the presence of Colonel Washington. Colonel Washington was, of course, a young man at the time, and had been commissioned to, to travel from his home of Mount Vernon to Boston to report on Braddock's defeat. And I've told you all about Braddock's defeat often enough, we all know what it was, Pittsburgh. Um, uh, the great success yesterday down on the Oliver Hazard Perry Highway at the, um, Flint, the, the Flint's Corn Mill run by the Smiths inspired me to call the owners. The, the mill has been taken over by the South Kingston Land Trust, and Diane and, uh, Bob Smith are going to go, delighted to take part in this event, will have, uh, the, uh, Flint corn being enjoyed there, may have the horses there, I don't know. Um, and then we will proceed, as we have before, to the Bay Campus. So few people realize this amazing trip that the five men made, uh, from Virginia to Boston, um, by the, by, uh, various ferries along the way, all the way up, um, Long Island to, uh, New London. This year, Jamestown's gonna be part of the show, and again, Newport at the Redwood Library. Again, we have this book, which I will repeat, I'm very sorry, this public schools in, um, South Kingston have not, shown no interest in it, but the Bren- the Meadowbrook Waldorf School has. This has been backed by Gordon Wood, I hope you, Gordon Wood of Brown, he's, I think we can say, the primary, uh, Washington scholar in the country, by Al Heiberg, who, unfortunately we have lost, he, we lost him four or five days ago, full-time gentleman, forty years running the, uh, Rhode Island Historical Society, and Al has been behind this kind of work, and we miss him terribly. Um, the third person is the, the editor in charge of the Wa- the Washington Papers at Mount Vernon. I don't think we could have stronger backing for this. So, uh, we're very glad that the Meadowbrook Waldorf School is going to ta- is going to take it, probably, uh, produce a play based on it, and maybe the public schools will find it of interest later on. Thank you so much for your backing, and I'll, I'll leave this letter with the details.
Thank you, Helen, I for one have known you for many years, and you have had passion for as long as I've known you about this, so, we appreciate, we appreciate your passion. Uh, the next thing I did wanna say is I welcome people to the podium, I do know that there are people here who are in support of the candidates for the school committee, um, appointments tonight, and we welcome the opportunity to have you come up and give us your discussion.
All I needed was a little crowding. So, Maureen Martin, reside at thirty-six forty-six Commodore Oliver Hazard Perry Memorial Highway, try to put that in a form somewhere. Um, and I've, uh, you know, I've already emailed to all of you, and I would just, uh, like to say, I know you spent a lot of time today interviewing cl- uh, uh, candidates, and, um, I appreciate all the time you've put into this, but I would like you to strongly consider Scott Muller as the candidate that should be chosen tonight. You know, as you know, Scott has, um, served almost a quarter of a century on the school committee in South Kingston, and, um, him and I haven't always agreed on everything, but, um, in general, I think he's been a hundred percent really great for the school committee, for the town, for the schools. All of my children have been mostly in school during the, his tenure, and so I've been keeping close track on the school committee for all those years. And, um, so I just can't imagine that anybody could be more prepared to step in to that, um, seat and, and be prepared to move forward. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Rose, I live in Kingston. Um, I'll leave that sign there because I'm also here for Scott. Um, I was involved in politics many years ago when Scott actually got started, I think we both got started about the same time. we both got started about the same time. He loves this community, he loves the kids, and he works like nobody has ever worked before to make sure that the decisions that are made are the right decisions for both the community and the children. I think with all of his institutional knowledge, it would be a shame to see that go by the wayside. I really think that he'd do a great job and I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
My name is Mark Layden, I'm from West Kingston and I'd like to comment on the school committee positions also. Tonight we have an opportunity to make a very important decision and from my perspective, the voters of South Kingston have already designated their, their choice. It seems like a very fair and equitable decision, should be an easy one for you to make, to pick the next highest vote getter. That's the most equitable and democratic process we can have. We had three candidates come and be interviewed this evening, you asked them all good questions, they all provided cogent, thorough, fairly okay answers, some of them were not aware of some of the inner concepts of the workings of the school committee, but they all seem like viable, appropriate candidates. However, they all have three very different skillsets and that, that makes your decision a little bit harder. But the thing that the school committee needs most is some new direction and some new organization. The structure of the school committee is crying out for a different kind of a tenor that is gonna be more user-friendly and accessible from, to the community. I think the community is looking for more transparency, more accountability, and a greater opportunity to feel like they are part of the educational process. And many times, unfortunately, that doesn't happen in South Kingston. We have a big cadre of people who are concerned about the, and are frustrated with their inability to access the inner workings of the school committee and voice their opinions in a variety of different issues, of which there are many. I know you're all aware of the petition that went out to the community and over a hundred people indicated their concern for selecting the highest vote getter. We already went through a democratic process, the people who wanted to run for the school committee had an opportunity to do that. Their, their ideas were presented in the local papers, the League of Women Voters had a program where they were able to make their presentation and share their concerns with the community. And I think we had a very well-educated electorate who then voiced their opinion based on the facts and their feelings about the candidates. So for us to go through this process, it may appear that this is more open and democratic, but I think it's also incumbent upon you to feel that you are responsible for being responsive to the, the voice of our voters. That's what we elected you for. And for us to do anything else than, than select the highest vote getter would be, I think, an egregious decision that would not be in keeping with what the voters really want. All of the candidates who were here tonight, one of them was the highest vote getter. His answers were extremely insightful and I think Peter would bring a depth of knowledge and a different perspective that's lacking and needed on the school committee. Scott certainly has a wealth of background and he has served proudly for the school department for many years, but the voters made a different decision. Our third candidate, I don't know, yeah, he's run before, he hasn't been selected before and now all of a sudden out of the blue, he wants to run again? Okay, that's his prerogative. But I think we need to respect the voters and actually the voters have made the best decision, I think. So I implore you to do the right thing tonight, respect the voice of the voters and fill this position with someone who's gonna bring new life and, and commitment to the school committee that's sorely needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Tara Apperson, twenty Allen Ave. I'm here tonight to ask you again to appoint the next highest vote getter to the vacant school committee seat. A few weeks ago, I started a petition so that others who share this opinion could sign. The petition received a hundred and thirty-two supporters and I have copies of it to pass out just in case you didn't happen to see it. I've already told you why I think you should appoint Andrew Gilmore into the committee, but I wanted to read the petition to you as well as some of the comments supporters have made. So, the language of the petition reads, "Due to the recent resignation of school committee member Kim Kimball, the town council is charged with filling her vacancy," as you know. "Having had an election just two months ago, it seems prudent to appoint the next highest vote getter, which in this case was Andrew Gilmoreton. Mr. Gilmoreton was the fifth highest vote getter in the election in which there were four open school committee seats. He had thirty-five fewer votes than the candidate who took the fourth seat. Despite having a clear direction from voters in November, the town council has decided it is their responsibility to open up the position to the general public and will be conducting interviews on which to base their decision. This will allow a potential candidate to circumvent the democratic process that just took place, in which candidates on the ballot campaigned, took place, took part in candidate forums, were subject to important questions posed by the public and teachers' union, and were interviewed by the local newspapers." Sign this petition to ask the town council to take the democratic process and the voices of your constituents seriously and appoint Andrew Gilmoreton. And then the language of the letter associated with the petition reads, "Dear town council members, we implore you to take the democratic process and the voices of your constituents seriously and appoint Andrew Gilmoreton at your next meeting. Appointing Andrew would demonstrate your belief in the democratic process. We also believe that Andrew is a qualified candidate because he has demonstrated a willingness to commit to researching and vetting issues that arise for the school district. He will provide a much-needed fresh perspective to the committee." So a hundred and thirty-two people signed this position, this petition? That's a hundred and thirty-two people who believe that the democratic process should be upheld and here are some of their comments. "I sign this petition because I agree with the premise of awarding the vacated seat to the next highest vote getter. I didn't vote for Andrew Gilmoreton and might even prefer someone else. However, I believe that is irrelevant. The citizens who gave Andrew his fifth place in the election must have their votes respected." That was Eugene Santos of Wakefield. Julie Erickson of Kingston said, "Let's not waste time or money and take Mr. Gilmoreton as the new school committee member. Go with the votes." John Toms of Wakefield said, "Andrew is dedicated, brilliant, and compassionate. To have a person with his gifts in service is an opportunity not to be squandered. Move fast." Alicia Mosley of Wakefield said, "I am signing to demand that the town, that the town council respect the democratic process and the will of the voters. All of the sitting members of the committee earned their seats based on how many people voted for them, so it would not be fair to appoint a replacement vetted through a different procedure. My signature is not an endorsement of Gilmoreton, my primary concern is that the process is fair and equitable." Teresa Gregg of Wakefield said, "Andrew Gilmoreton is a thorough thinker and will absolutely add to the conversation around what is best for our children's education." Jenny Neeland of Wakefield said, "I am signing because I believe Andrew can serve the school committee well and would be an intelligent addition to both realizing and strategizing school budget discussion, decisions before us. Also, don't assume, never assume you know better than the hundreds of voters who chose Andrew Gilmoreton. That would be insulting and irreversibly disempowering. Decide on what tone you want the town council to set. It is possible for the town council members to serve the community with vision, openness, and transparency." And one more, Geraldine DeLuca-Hawke from Cumberland wrote, "As a teacher in South Kingston, it only seems right that the voters' voices be heard. Mr. Gilmoreton is the right choice to fill this vacant position." So I agree with many of those statements. I hope that you were able to have access to them, this was the first petition that I've ever started, so I wasn't exactly sure how it worked, I kind of assumed that you would have access to that, but I'm not sure if that's exactly what happened. But, you know, I agree with many of those statements. And though the petition did not specifically address why the other two candidates should not be considered, I wanted to add that I personally do not think Roland Benjamin is the right choice at this time. I do not believe that a candidate who did not run in the recent election should be considered and I believe the voters have spoken when they did not elect Roland in his previous attempts at local government. Thank you for your time, I hope you take my thoughts and the thoughts of your constituents under serious consideration in making this decision.
Thank you. Anybody else, please come up to the podium?
Hi, my name is Charlotte Tullen, I live at two seven seven Weathervein Road, Wakefield, and I wanted to come up and express my support for Andrew Gilmoreton. I did vote for him in the election, I think he's a strong candidate because I watched that YouTube video that the League of Women Voters uploaded from Taipei, Taiwan. I watched that because I wanted to vote on the town council and for the school election. I requested that ballot get sent to me and when I found out I had filled out the form wrong and they had sent me only the federal elections, I called at close to midnight to the State House and said, "No, you have to send me a new one. I got this ballot, I'm doing this by mail from around the globe because I want my town council, my school committee elections," and they sent it to me. And I express mailed that thing back because these were the elections that I wanted my voice to be heard in. I think Andrew Gilmoreton is a fine candidate, I think he brings a set of skills that the school committee seriously needs. The kinds of things that he was offering when he talked about what his vision was are skills that are quite frankly ridiculously expensive for us to try and commission as a town. Computer science skills, data analysis skills, survey skills, these things do not come cheap. And part of the reason I was so excited to vote for him was the chance to get that on our school committee. So I wanted to speak here today, not just to someone who voted for Mr. Gilmoreton, but also to someone who, as other people have said, "For free, the voters have spoken, he was the next highest vote getter, the election was only three months ago," and asked that the town council considered that and the fact that he's an extremely strong candidate and listen to what the voters have said. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other interesting reasons?
I'm not here to support any of the candidates, I'm just here to remind the town council that a number of months ago, you put on the ballot a policy or an issue dealing with who would replace a town council member who left the town council. And that was voted upon and it was the highest vote getter that followed the fifth person elected to the town council. It would seem hypocritical to me that you wouldn't do the same thing for the school committee. Why you didn't have that as part of the vote that was taken at that time, and I was here for that meeting, as a matter of fact, I don't know. But you did put on the ballot that the sixth and seventh highest vote getters would be the replacement people for the town council itself. And it seems perfectly linear in my way of thinking about it, that you should do this for the school committee as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jonathan Daily-Labelle, I was here two weeks ago, I'll try not to be, I don't think I'll be redundant for the most part. So I was here for the interviews. Three people that are, have applied are good-thinking people, they're intelligent, they're interested, they're involved, I don't think there's any question about that. The questions that I heard and the answers made it clear to me that none of them have every answer to every question and like one of the other speakers said, there's different skillsets. You know, running the schools, running the town is complicated, nobody that currently is on the school committee or in the school department has all the answers either. It's a tough juggle. So there are problems, there are issues, we do have a very good school district and I think that people can be proud to send their children to our schools, but I think things do need to be looked at differently. And I think that was the message of the election. You look at Kim and Alicia at the top, that was the message. And so I think, I'll do deference to Mr. Miller, you know, I think at this time, the voters have spoken and said, experience means less to them. That was the message of the election. I think that Roland Benjamin, it's known, I've said, he's run three times, doesn't get to him, doesn't mean anything about him as a person, but he has run three times and three times the voters have chosen not to put him in. But I just, it will, I won't be able to, there's things that get complicated in my brain, but that's one, usually I can work through it, that's one I will not be able to work through, is that, that fact, as well as the fact, there have been plenty of Republicans who have run for local government and not a single Republican has been elected by the voters since two thousand and four. So to have the town council appoint that person when that person didn't even run, very, very inappropriate and I can't even believe it's being considered. I was here for this interview process, it is what it is, I don't think you had to go through this process to think about fifteen-minute conversations to override an election that just happened two months ago. I just can't, I can't understand that either. I just want to say that for my elections, I have won, I know for a fact, because I've had support across the political spectrum. So when I speak saying to not support the Republican, I'm not saying it from that partisan standpoint because I know I've had Republican support in my election itself, but I think that it's very clear that the voters have spoken in that regard. Lastly, all three of these candidates have been involved, they have different experiences and perspectives. Andrew Gilmoreton has been involved for years, he sees the time commitment, he knows the time commitment, he's been to those meetings, he's contributed to the district in other ways, he will hit the ground running. I think any of the, that's really not the issue because they all have knowledge, they bring different knowledges, they have different school sets, skillsets, but they will, they all have been involved and will catch themselves up to speed very quickly and Andrew definitely would, as far as what I know. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Doral Beasley, two seventy-one Biscuit City Road in Kingston. This old problem should have been taken care of by the last council, but they decided to kick the can down the road, unfortunately, so here we are. As I talked to before me, you changed the charter for filling vacancies in the, in the council? The school committee vacancy problem issue should have also been done at the same time, hopefully this, this council will take care of it before the two thousand and eighteen election so that we can take, put this to bed. I do not know Mr. Gilmoreton, I've known Scott Mueller for, since nineteen ninety-five, I met him during a superintendent's search committee that I volunteered to be on, so I think he was in his, I think he was in his first term in nineteen ninety-five, the end of his first term, so that's, he's, he's been on the, on the school committee for a long time and the town should have nothing but, you know, admire his dedication and his perseverance to do that job for that long. But the bottom line is, these last few people have talked to you about is, we had an election and we don't want to disenfranchise the people that ran seventy-six days ago. and to, we don't want to disenfranchise the people that ran seventy-six days ago. And in case someone else on the school committee were to, were to resign or leave for any reason between now and November sixth, twenty eighteen, when the next election takes place, Mr. Mueller would be the next person that you would appoint. Thank you.
Jim O'Neill, Mattoonik. Tough decision you have to make tonight, but I don't think enough people here in this room understands what your obligations are to the community. You cover not only what the school committee, their budget capital improvement plan, you have to cover so many other areas of this community. I don't care if it's wastewater and sewers, I don't care if it's parks and rec, school committee, school committee. You have incredible importance in this community. You have to look broadly and widely as to who you want to be on this committee. I don't know Mr. Gil Martin. I know Roland Benjamin, businessman. Yes, he's run for office numerous times, he's been the top vote getter in the Republican Party. Amazing he's gotten as many votes as he has in South Kingston, but he's a businessman. Right now, we don't have a businessman on the school committee, or business person, excuse me. Scott Mueller, what a resume. And we've got some really tough decisions to make on this school committee, which you have to approve and which you can really deduct an awful lot of money from when you hear the final solution here this spring. And that brings me to Scott Mueller, who has made the tough decisions before, and especially when the teachers had to give up a lot for many, many years, even though I disagreed with him on many, many times on our joint meetings, petitions, so on and so forth. He knows the business, and he is the key person who will wind up being the one to negotiate on behalf of this community, the taxpayers, and hopefully will be presenting you a budget eventually with those negotiations that you'll have to determine. So he's absolutely probably the most qualified candidate that we need at this junction. But I really think that, you know, they talk about a hundred and thirty-two signatures on a petition. That should have been thirteen hundred and twenty. That's what it should have been, should have been two thousand, what, a hundred and thirty-two, please. I've done this for twenty years, and I can wrap that up on a, on a weekday. So that's really crazy. That's not enough to do any conviction for any of you. I would also like to tell you that on the fourteen years I was on the council, I believe we had four resignations from the school committee. Town council did his job, we did the interviews, we didn't go by who was next, so on and so forth. We did what at that time would be looking globally, looking nationally, looking statewide and here, who would be the best person on the candidate. Yes, there was bias towards party folks, but we did that four times. The first time that we had an election that would have evolved what the folks this past fall passed, the next highest vote getter, I believe, was when Carol MacIntyre resigned to run for Don Lally's seat, which he gave up. And that was the only time that I can remember in the last fifteen or sixteen years that we had a, an opening on the town council like that. So that was a rarity, a rarity. And so the voters passed that, and that makes sense, it's an eight or nine thousand dollar bill. But the council did its work continually. You'll always see, see school committee folks leaving. So I think it's in your hands, not the thirty-five, forty vote difference in that election. You have to make the decision that's best for everyone in this town, just not the school people. And I think that falls in on Scott Mueller, and I think he's the best and most qualified candidate. Thank you.
Hi, my name is George Dubuque, and I spoke once before in front of this town council when we had the thing about replacing the town council person. And my opinion at that time was, if you just take the next person, then you're really disenfranchising the voters. Because with a person out of the position, I felt you should have another election, and that's the only way that the voters are not disenfranchised. Because circumstances change. I understand why we're not doing it, you're going to save like thirty thousand dollars. It's a, a lot more convenient, but there's another reason why the town council probably shouldn't do it, it's because you're the top dogs of the town, you're the top level. We elect you so you can make the tough decisions. I don't believe that just because you're the next voter, I mean, the, the next in the number of votes in an election, that you should automatically be moved into the position because after someone leaves, new people, as we see now, come forward because they want to be a part of something. So there are many other circumstances that change, and it's not the same when you remove all those top vote getters out. Now the numbers would all be different if you'd have a new election. So there's many, many reasons why I don't think that just taking the next person is the right way to go. But I believe the biggest reason is because you all represent us, and we put you into office expecting that you're going to make the right decision. So we're putting our faith in you, and I think in this case, the right decision is going to be Scott with the twenty years' experience that he's already had, the national recognition he's had. You just can't go wrong by putting him in, into the school committee. And I want everyone to remember, the town's reputation is built on the school system that we have, and we want to keep it the best. Thank you.
Brooke Conley, Woodruff Avenue, Wakefield. I just wanted to reiterate that I support the next highest vote getter for the reasons that other people have come up here. I, I think you guys are up there because you guys did put yourselves through the gauntlet, and you came out, and you're the town council now, but I don't think you're up there because you're better or smarter than other people. You're up there to manifest the will of the people, not to decide things for them, to decide things that they can't decide for themselves. So that's it. Thank you.
I just have one more comment to make. I think it's insulting to say that the voice of the people doesn't matter. We've just experienced a national election where democracy is critical, and if that doesn't filter down to the local level, right here at the school committee and the town council in South Kingston, then how, how do we justify living in a democracy where a vote, a vote counts? And to say someone's, yeah, someone might have more experience, but the voters didn't, didn't feel that way. And it's incumbent upon you, I think, as, as I, and as I'm sure you realize, that for this democratic process to be meaningful and to have any value and honesty, in spite of the fact that Andrew is, I think, the most capable candidate and brings the best breadth of experience and fresh views on things, even beyond that, you have to go with the highest vote getter. I think it's insulting to say that the, all those people who responded to that, to that petition don't matter, and that the voice, and that the voters don't matter. They do matter, and that's why we elected you, to make sure your votes count.
I have nothing outside of what I've already spoken in the pre-session with you, certainly answer any questions council may have. If not, yield to the solicitor.
Yeah, I guess there was a video on Facebook today about the pounding of the sheet pile wall along Mattoonik Beach Road. I was just hoping for an update on how that process is going.
The sheet pile, they're not in operation today and probably won't be for the next couple of days based on the weather conditions. They can't drive sheets or put sheets in whenever there's any type of wind. The sheet pile, at this point, they have completed the initial installation on the entire two hundred and two feet. They now have additional sheets that will have to be installed on the, to support the excavation near the old relic wall. That also needs to be completed. They'll, they will be coming back and hammering down to the three and a half feet all of the sheets that are in place now, probably within the next, next couple of weeks. I've indicated to the council that we've drafted the purchase and sale agreement is in almost complete form. We'll be asking for an executive session with the council, probably at the next council meeting to discuss the contents of that. But wall construction is going, going fine at this point. We're still looking at completion of construction sometime before Memorial Day. Understand that the sheets are just one component of that project. Once the sheets are driven, and the sand then has to be removed down to twenty feet so that they can then install the armor stone. The armor stone will, will be installed, and then the sand will be replaced on top of that armor stone. So that work needs to be completed, probably before Memorial Day. On the relic wall, there still are two issues that are outstanding. One is a necessary easement that the town has developed and submitted to the attorney representing the C R O C. And the second, second item is the access egress from the copper lots to the beach area. That will require a, an engineering design that is yet to be completed, to my knowledge. So I think the project is moving along. We knew it would be a difficult construction season during the winter, but it's also the time we wanted to complete the project since there would be less traffic in the, in the beach area.
I think Steve gave you the outline of what's going on. I'm in touch with the body representing candidates, and as Steve mentioned, the purchase and sales agreement is just about finished, we're finishing up on easements and some of the ancillary documents, so you'll be made aware of all that by the next meeting.
We don't have any other appointments for the council. We do.
To appoint Christine Bishop Chapman. For a term to expire March of twenty twenty-three.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And another resolution appointing Richard Jurzak, reappointing to the economic development committee, who will return to expire March of twenty twenty.
All those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to be moving on to item twelve B right now, which is the appointment for the school committee for an interim term to expire November two thousand and eighteen. Before we do that, I would like to say that we have three people in this room who are very passionate and ready to serve, and it becomes difficult when there's one opening. So two people will walk out of here feeling not as happy as they would have liked to have felt when they walked in the door. One person will be successful and will serve on our school committee. I personally want to thank all three people for your tenacity, for your professionalism, and for your will to serve. It's a difficult decision for all of us. It truthfully is a difficult decision for all of us, but it's a decision that we will have to make. And I want to thank each and every one of you, and I'm sure the council feels the same way as I do, because it's not all the time you get a lot of people who want to step up to the plate. Sometimes you have to seek people out to try to volunteer time to do things, but you're doing it for the will of the people of this town, and that's really important. So that being said, we don't have to have a motion, we don't have to have a second, this is a nomination process. So from the table, we can have the members of the council nominate, and then we will vote on each. And I guess we should just leave them on the order that they are on the agenda, if that's okay with everybody here at the table. So the first person, do we have a nomination for Andrew Gil Martin?
I'll make a nomination for Andrew Gil Martin. I think I've made it pretty clear how I feel about the issue. I think that, like Meg said, we've got three great applicants. I think each and every one of them would be valuable to the school committee. Frankly, I didn't think that I needed interviews. I, I felt my mind was made up, and they didn't change my mind, but I was grateful for the opportunity to hear their platforms again and what made them interested. I think that it's not always right to go to the next highest vote getter. I can concede to that. As somebody who ran in a special election as the next highest vote getter, I, I certainly have a different perspective on it. I think at the town council level, we were thinking about the costs that's associated with the elections, but I also heard from a lot of voters about the time that went into running a campaign and researching candidates, and especially when they're close to another election. I think the circumstances that we have here, we're not at the end of a term. I don't think anything's changed from the declaration period in June that would drastically motivate people to run, or that we would need a different person to that position. I think that we had an election two months ago, and the voters made it really clear who they wanted and who they put their faith in. If it wasn't two months ago, I might not feel that same way, but it was very recent. There's people I'd love to appoint to that position, friends, people that I think would offer a unique perspective that might change things completely, but I'm not elected here to do what I think is best all the time. I'm elected to do what the voters want me to do, and that is about making some really hard choices sometimes. I think they've made it really clear in the last election who they put their faith in, and I think that's why I'm supporting Andrew.
So we have a nomination on the table for Andrew Gil Martin. All those in favor?
Oh. What we need to do is ask for any other nominations, then have to get all the nominations on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to close nominations, then have discussion.
Okay. Do we have a nomination on the floor for Roland Benjamin?
I'd like to nominate Roland Benjamin.
And thirdly, do we have a nomination for Scott Mueller?
I'll make a nomination for Scott.
So we have three nominations on the floor at this moment. Can close the nominations?
Make a motion to close the nominations.
Any for the discussion?
I, I think that this process has definitely brought the community together. I appreciate everyone that reached out to us individually or collectively. Not an easy decision to make, but at the end of the day, I think all of us are up here
I think he ran a good race and all those votes definitely count. They weigh in my considerations of this issue. Um, but also to act like the last two months haven't happened, uh, I think is not the way to go either. I think we need to govern for the situation that confronts us. And I've been paying very close attention to the school committee since the elections. And I've listened to school committees who have, school committee members who have come forward. The new chair in particular has come forward and supported Scott uh, cause she feels his expertise would be very valuable on the committee. And I have to agree. I see that we're in the middle of negotiations with three different contracts in the current year. I see that Scott has that experience. I also see that Scott is a bridge between the independent leadership of the committee, which has been a real change, uh, and the people who are on the committee and maybe have not been as cooperative with Alicia as they could have been during these two months. So I think Scott gives, um, great assets to the committee if he's put in that place. I, I do not see, uh, you know, the, the fact that somebody came in fifth place as a qualification for being appointed automatically. I think you don't have to go back too far in the town's history to see when there wouldn't even have been a person who came in next because we only had four people run for four spots. Same thing has happened in other communities. Similarly, if a slate of candidates, uh, won election, uh, say it was Democrats or Republicans or independents who all agreed on something, they all get elected, the next highest vote getter has nothing to do with the mandate that elected those four people to the, to the committee. So, uh, the reasoning that the next highest vote getter just automatically gets the spot does not make a lot of democratic sense in my mind. I think we chose to do that at the town council level because it saves money for the town. I personally did not vote for that charter change because I think it diminishes democracy in our town. And if I had that choice again, I would, I would certainly cast my vote the same way. If I really had my way, I'd have both of these openings filled by special elections. Certainly since the election in November, really to me shows a threat to democracy around our country. So I think democracy is at a premium currently, uh, here locally as well as nationwide. So for all those reasons, I think Scott is the most qualified. And I, I think our mandate is to make the choice for the best person who fills the, the open position.
Sure. Um, I'd like to thank all three candidates for coming forward and interviewing tonight. Um, this, unlike Abel, has not been my hardest decision. I think the two budget votes where I lost were harder than this. Three good qualified candidates for a lot of the reasons that Abel pointed out. Uh, I'm not totally sold on the next highest vote getter is automatic for, again, for a lot of the reasons that Abel pointed out. I'm supporting Roland Benjamin because I think he brings a unique skill set to that committee that we haven't had for a very long time. And that's, uh, his participation with the school committee for many, many years and his, um, his fiscal, um, knowledge. Uh, so I'll, I'll be supporting Roland because of that.
I'd like to add one quick thing to Roland. Um, I'm sure there's people in the audience that are wondering why I nominated Roland. Uh, one of the big reasons for that is that I had the opportunity to serve with him on the Accountability Subcommittee as a citizen member. Uh, didn't know him prior to that. Uh, a lot of other great people from the school committee were on there as well. And we really looked at solutions. We looked at trying to figure out why things were the way they were or why certain kids were getting suspended more than other kids. Or our teacher survey, satisfaction survey that, um, is still going on, on to this day. And when it comes to budgeting, um, I, I think both, you know, Scott and Roland would do a, a great job with that. Um, but I had the opportunity to go through budgets with Roland. Uh, we, we, we helped change the bylaws that were kind of archaic for the school committee. Um, and when I say we helped, we didn't have a vote, we just made suggestions to the school committee, which they voted on. So for those reasons, uh, and the fact that I think we are at a crossroads right now with our budget and what direction our schools are gonna go in, uh, is the reason why I plan on voting for Roland.
Is the number start with, uh, first nomination for Andrew Gil, Gil Martin?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
Um, I, I, so I have a mic. So what, what happens if we can't get three votes for one candidate? Can we continue to vote?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. If, if you don't have three votes, you're going to have more discussion and vote again.
Okay.
Stay at it.
This might be my hardest vote.
So we have Andrew Gil Martin. Uh, all those in favor of Andrew Gil Martin?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next candidate is Roland Benjamin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, you can, I can vote in several of them, right? Well. Oh, oh, I just figured you were gonna come back around.
Let's make sure we all understand. So Liz voted for Mr. Gil Martin.
Yep.
So you are not eligible to.
Oh.
Unless you say, unless you say in this round that you want to withdraw your vote for Mr. Gil Martin. Okay, so why don't we do this, and everyone vote once. Then after those votes, if we don't have anyone with a majority, you can have discussion again and then take a second vote, a second round of vote.
Next is Scott Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so it looks like we have two, two, one.
Two, two, one.
So no one has three at this point. I, I'm trying to move back and discuss and try again.
Any comments at the table?
I think that during the democratic process, the fact that, I mean, I think there's no doubt in my mind that Scott is extremely qualified and has the expertise to bring to the table that would be a valuable asset for the school committee. But I think the fact that he was in that position for twenty-four years and during this election cycle, we saw two independents get voted as the highest vote getters. Um, I think it sent a clear message to me that the voters were looking for different kinds of leadership on the school committee. I think Scott's done a lot of valuable things. I think he's done great things, but I also think that we're in a predicament that we are in today and we need different and fresh perspectives. I would like to see Andrew in that position. If I can't get Andrew, then I think that somebody also under the category of different would be appropriate. Somebody that brings something new to the table, um, because frankly, you know, for the last five or six years, we've seen budget after budget come to us with increases and significant declining enrollment. And I think that it's time we put somebody in that position that can be a little more unique with their perspectives and their solutions that they have to offer.
I, I, I guess I think that a little bit differently because, um, we did have change in this election and we do have new people on the school committee. And we have people on the school committee now who, it's, it's the beginning of their tenure. And when you can have somebody like Scott with not only his experience on the school committee, I don't even want to say that's a drop in the bucket because it's invaluable, but when you look at his resume and the tenure and the seats and positions that he's held, not even in the school committee, but for like Partnership for Prevention and other committees within the town and serving at Rhode Island College and just constantly working for South Kingston. I think he would be a great piece of glue to really mentor for the new people that have just come in have a point of preference to ask questions and to, to use his, his experience and his skill set to be an asset to the school committee. That's, that's how I feel.
Uh, are they were, yeah, there was, um, I don't know. Um, one thing I particularly liked about Scott was just, you know, the processes that were passed a couple of years. Really trying to get some, 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 some gas. Our, our student population. Special needs, sorry. Um, and he's been the one on the committee who's listened to my concerns the most closely. Uh, I think that's an important quality. When, you know, our, we have a great school system, there are very few failings in it. And to have an expert on really the biggest, uh, the biggest problem with our school system as I see it is, is important. Uh, I really appreciate Andrew, um, for the systems thinker that he appears to be and that I believe him to be. I think he would really bring, uh, you know, a, a really fresh perspective, um, not just to the budget, um, but to really pedagogical issues as well, even though that's not as focused. Um, I, Roland, uh, clearly has a lot of experience, um, in the school committee, uh, with the school committee, in the school community. Um, I can understand why both of you are supporting him. Um, I, I do think it matters to me that both Andrew and Scott ran in this current election, put themselves out there and, um, came within thirty-three votes of each other. So again, I'm, I'd be happy with either Andrew or Scott. Um, I'm willing to, to join, uh, Liz in supporting Andrew.
There's no other discussion we should take or we can't.
Okay, uh, all those who are in favor of Andrew Gil Martin?
Aye.
Two, two. All those in favor of Roland Benjamin?
Aye.
Two, two. All those in favor of Scott Mueller?
Aye.
Again, one, two, two, one.
Well, um, uh, all those.
I have a hard time just discounting that Andrew was only less than forty votes behind, um, the next highest vote getter. I just, I ha- I'm having a hard time pulling away from that. Um, and I know that seems contradictory if I say I would support Roland, but I think what his, the closeness in that election represents is, like I said, a, a change that the voters want. And I, I just can't get away from not giving it to Andrew. I mean, Roland went through this a few years ago when he was the next highest vote getter and we appointed somebody else. And, um, I just don't think two wrongs make a right, and I would really much rather have Andrew in that position. I just think, I, I think he's needed and I think that the voters spoke. Um, I might have a different opinion. I might want somebody completely different up there, but it's not up to me to decide who I think is best. I think that, uh, it was said very nicely by Brooke, you know, we're here to manifest the will of the people and not decide for them. Um, and I think that's a really incredible distinction that I need to make or that I had to make when I came to this decision. So that's why I'm going with Andrew still.
I agree with those points, Liz. I, I think, uh, we should also, um, weigh carefully all the input that we've gotten since, uh, the last couple of weeks. Um, certainly, uh, the petition matters. Hundred thirty-two people, maybe not the most that's ever signed a petition, but it counts in our small community. Um, I think we've also received a lot more email correspondence in favor of Andrew as well. Um, Roland has also had a lot of support, a lot of well-written, um, support, uh, for you Roland. And I appreciate really the, all, all of the input that we've gotten from the community has been very civil, which is nice in politics. Um, so I, I appreciate that. I, I'm gonna stick with Andrew here.
One more round?
Really need to have, um, Sean, our candidates, uh, some, 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 yes.
And I don't want, you know what, her, honestly, um, as I had said before, we have three candidates who are very passionate about this position. There's no question about it. And as I said, sometimes you don't get anybody to fill the shoes, but you've got three people who really want it. And we owe it to not only these three candidates tonight, but we owe it to the school committee, the administration, the children, and the voters. So I, I would like to see this decision made tonight, and I'm willing to go another round or two if we have to.
I, I'd like to just add that the emails that I received were overwhelmingly in support of, of Roland. And the emails that I got supporting Roland were lengthy and detailed. Um, um, I'm supporting Roland.
Okay, um, let's try one more time and then, uh, we'll have one more further discussion and see if we can get things done. For Andrew Gil Martin?
Aye.
Roland?
Aye.
Two. Scott?
Aye.
We're still in a deadlock, which means we really have to make a decision or somebody has to change their mind. And everybody seems to be very committed to who they want. Um. Go ahead, did you have something?
Yeah, um, one of your options here is to drop the low voter. That would be Scott, because he only has one vote. That would leave two names on the table and then have a vote again with those two names.
We have.
Because that, that is a way of dealing with these types of voting. Well, or you can just agree by consensus that we drop the low voter. I, uh, uh, otherwise I don't know how you're going to proceed tonight.
I would prefer if that's the case, then we make a motion, then.
Well, see if someone will make a motion.
I would make a motion that we drop the lowest vote getter.
All those in favor?
Well, well, you need a second on that one. Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are all those opposed?
Yeah.
Aye.
That was three, two, uh, there's a motion there, but that's, you now have two candidates left. Have more discussion and another vote. Any other discussion?
I think, uh. You know, I don't know what we can say at this point that we haven't already said. Um, clearly, now we have, um, two, two very different candidates who will bring different qualifications to, uh, the committee, I think, uh. They're both from, you know, the private sector, will try to look for efficiencies, I think, in, uh, in the systems that the school committee runs. Uh, you have to put a, a pretty big premium on, uh, you know, the fact that Andrew did just get, I forget how many votes, thirty-five hundred votes about two months ago. Um, so I will be voting for Andrew.
Um, I'd like to add that, um, I could be wrong, but I believe, um, I do believe Andrew brings something different to the table. Um, the will of the voters, I feel, could have changed if Kim wasn't in the race originally. Uh, but that being said, uh, when it comes to, uh, me supporting Roland, one of the reasons is that he's been committed to the school committee, um, as a citizen member, even when he didn't get elected. Um, I believe he served, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he served four years on the Accountability Subcommittee. Um, so it shows that he is interested and passionate about the children in our community. And, um, not only with our schools, but also with coaching, uh, staying involved even when he felt, um, that he hadn't gotten elected.
I think that some of the skills, again, two very good candidates are left here with different skill sets. Some of the-
Some of the skills that I, I feel strongly that Roland is gonna bring to the school committee are skills that are needed on the school committee. As a small business person, uh, he's gonna look at the budget differently. And I think it's something that, uh, I don't wanna use the term out of balance, but it, it needs, uh, reinforcement on the school committee. I feel strongly about this.
Further discussion? This is definitely one of the more difficult votes and decisions that we've had to make. Um, yeah, I, I mean, it's, the input that we've gotten from the community with the emails, uh, it's been really wonderful to see that kind of, uh, engagement. Um, I think Roland is wonderful. I just wish that he had run in this election cycle because it'd be a lot easier for me to get behind. Um, I, I'm really steadfast in my support for Andrew.
I would like to just make a couple of points that I heard Andrew make, um, in the interview process. That, to me, spoke to a really, a high level of analysis that he does when he comes to issues. He spoke about the dual language immersion, um, the impact that it has on teacher hiring. I think that's the type of analysis that we need, um, the school committee, and that maybe has been lacking. He also, uh, spoke about, uh, the technology in, in the classrooms very eloquently, I thought. And I think both of those are areas, when we look at closing the budget deficit that we're faced with and that the school committee is faced with, are going to need close examination. Um, I was also, uh, you know, I, I don't think either Andrew or Ro- Roland has a lot of experience with that, that gap, uh, in achievement that I'm so worried about, but it, it's heartening to me to hear that Andrew, uh, has experience with a, the child who's, uh, dealt with an IEP and a five oh four plan. Um, so it, again, things we should consider.
Start again? All those in favor of Andrew Gilmarten?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Roland Benjamin?
Aye.
Aye.
Now that it's, uh, been called, accepted, uh, Lord, I wish you success. Congratulations. And we look forward to having you serve on us.
Congratulations.
Thank you to all of you.
Yes, we are moving on to item thirteen C, which is a resolution authorizing a Fifth Amendment to Sinagro Northeast. Um, originally awarded on October eleventh, two thousand and five for municipal wastewater sludge transportation, incineration, and disposal. And as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director dated January seventeenth.
Recommendation is to, uh, award with Sinagro as far as a contract amendment for five years, uh, to extend it. As I had mentioned in the pre-session, there will be a substantial price increase, uh, with doing business, but this is the only company that can, uh, provide the incineration services. Recommend a council approve as presented.
Motion to approve, item as presented.
Can I just ask that everyone take their comments outside just while we finish up the agenda, if you don't mind?
Um, do we have any discussion or do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving forward to D. A resolution authorizing an award of contracted ADS construction, um, for the installation of a new ADA compliant lift at the Neighborhood Guild in accordance with all the specifications in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand, including contingency of seventeen thousand dollars. And as further described in a memorand- man- memorandum for the, from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager.
I'd make a motion that we approve item thirteen, um, fifteen.
Um, and I just wanna say thank you to the lengths that, um, Terry and Steve had mentioned about our town goes to, to make sure that people are, um, anybody in a wheelchair or not a- able to access the building are gonna be accommodated during the time of construction. I think that means a lot to them. And, um, I'm glad to hear we're gonna do that. Hopefully it'll, it'll be quicker than they said.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, I think that leads us to the end.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joe wants to stay longer. The meeting is adjourned at nine oh five.